Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March second meeting of the Fitchburg City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Counselor Hughes, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
He's on mute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? You are muted.
Sorry, I thought I hit it. The following counselors are present at this evening's meeting. President Zarella, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kuchar, Counselor Fleming, I don't see Counsel Green, Counselor Hughes, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squallia, Counselor Van Hasenga, and Counselor Walsh.
Thank you very much. I would now like to ask unanimous consent for suspension of all rules of this council or of our parliamentary authority which are in conflict with either the remote participation format or with the state guidelines on remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic. If there is no objection?
Uh, one objection.
Okay, I will take that by roll call then. Please, Madam Clerk?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
No.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Hi.
Counselor Van Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Mayor Dina Tally?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Dina Tally, I apologize. Looking at you, seeing him.
I'm so happy to participate in the council.
I'm so sorry, Counselor Dina Tally.
I'm gonna remember this. I'm now gonna be able to speak at any time, right? No, no, okay, never mind.
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry I joined late. What is this?
Uh, the two-thirds consent for remote participation.
Yes.
All right, I answered for you.
That is ten to one. I'm sorry, nine to one.
Thank you very much. Uh, the public has been advised to contact the city clerk's office by noon today regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. Uh, we have no public comment that has been expressly brought to our attention, but we do have one attendee uh, who I don't believe has indicated a purpose, uh, Ms. Nieves, uh, is there a particular item on the agenda about which you'd like to speak?
Uh, yeah, it was just to allow a poll put up on 155 McIntyre Road.
All right, in that case, I will actually uh, ask you to hold off on any statement until we reach the public hearing portion of the evening, uh, which will be after a few committee reports.
Okay.
Thank you very much and thank you for joining us.
You're welcome.
All right. Um, we will now hear a report from the Appointments Committee. I'm sorry, I've completely forgotten who the new Chair of Appointments is, Counselor Kuchar.
I was just as shocked as you were, um, President Zarella. Um, the Appointments Committee met uh, earlier this evening uh, to take up the uh, appointment to the Human Rights Commission, um, Ms. Krista Ford Rhodes, uh, to complete um, Mr. Adrian Ford's term to expire May first of twenty twenty.
And was that approved?
It was.
Thank you. It is before the council.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second uh, to accept if there is no objection. It is accepted by unanimous consent. Uh, we will now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Hughes.
We have reviewed the records and appear that all records are in order at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor. It is before the council.
Make a motion when you accept.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is approved by unanimous consent. I have communications from His Honor, the Mayor, uh, which will be referred to the Appointments Committee. Ms. Elizabeth Walsh, as a member of the Airport Commission, term to expire March first, twenty twenty-four, and Mr. David Genisi, as a member of the Airport Commission, term to expire March first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, those are both going to be forwarded to Appointments. Uh, we have the year forty-seven CDBG recommendations. Those will be sent to Finance. Uh, and we have a communication from myself, uh, President Zarella, uh, requesting the reappointment of Ms. Amanda Alfred as Assistant City Clerk, term to expire March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. That will be sent to Appointments. We have two annual reports, the twenty-twenty annual report of the City Clerk's Office and the twenty-twenty, uh, sorry, the December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, uh, annual report of the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority. Is that correct, twenty nineteen?
President Zarella, I believe that they um, titled it that, but it is for twenty-twenty is my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Uh, if there is no objection, we will waive the reading and put those on file with the City Clerk's Office. Seeing no objection, they will be so filed. Uh, I would ask unanimous consent to take the committee reports out of order to put uh, Economic Development and Legislative Affairs together.
I'm over.
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion and second. If there is no objection, we will do that. Uh, so we have a report from the Economic Development Committee, Counselor Van Hasenga.
Thank you, Mr. President. On February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the Economic Development Committee met to hear bundle three of Phase Two of the proposed zoning changes. We had a very long discussion in two nights about a very um, variety of subjects. Um, we took the input of the Planning Board in addition to discussion with members of committee, members of the Community Development and Planning Staff and the uh, Planning Board Chair, Ms. Karen, and we voted on specific changes uh, both proposed by the Planning Board and also proposed in the committee. And I would refer to the counselors um, to review the minutes for both meetings which were sent out this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have a comment on this item from Counselor Fleming.
So you said that was sent out this afternoon? The minutes from both the meetings?
Yes. They should, they should have been. Let me.
Oh, so at quarter of five. So why are we taking them together where there was two separate items, two different outcomes to the meetings?
Counselor, we're not actually voting on action on either of these uh, committee reports tonight. We are simply accepting the reports into the record. And then next meeting, when we actually take up the recommendations, there will be a special call out for any items on which the two committees did not agree.
Uh, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I will clarify that a separate set of minutes for each Economic Development Committee meeting were sent.
Okay, so it was just about an hour ago.
And there, there was a delay in reviewing and editing them um, due to the length of the meetings um, so they did not get out till today.
Right, so this will, officially speaking, this will be acceptance of an oral report. And the minutes themselves will be uh, confirmed at the, at the following meeting for notice purposes.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, thank you. I have Counselor Squallia.
Yes, thank you. President Zarella, we have Annie Egle here who has submitted um, her recommendations for the adjustment as requested uh, for the farmer's market ordinance. I don't know if, if we are discussing um, the specifics um, of that in this meeting or at the next meeting.
That will be during the public, the public hearing uh, further down the agenda. Uh, this is actually bundle three that we're getting the reports on. The public hearing is on bundle two, which includes the farmer's market. But welcome, Ms. Egle, and we'll look forward to hearing from you when that comes up. Uh,
Accept the uh, committee minute, the, the report of the Economic Development Committee?
I do have a comment from Counselor Dina Tally first.
Just procedurally in the future, I, I would suggest that this be sent to councils a whole next time. I know it's Monday morning quarterback, but um, that having two different committees go through these packages to me is counterproductive. Uh, something this wide scale and widespread that affects all wards um, should go to councils a whole next time. Cause you, you have a committee on economic development give their input, then you have the committee on legislative affairs give their input, and then there are people on the Economic Development Committee that are not on the Legislative Affairs Committee, and so now you have two different reports. Whether it's minor or major is irrelevant to me. I, I don't know why it didn't happen previously, but again, Monday morning quarterback, if we are to go forward with another round, I think for Mr. Skorsky's sanity and certainly for mine, we have it be as council as a whole and not split it into different committees, because now we have conflicting reports that we have to reconcile during a public hearing, which um, I gotta be honest, I read through both reports yesterday. I had to take some Advil. Uh, because I could not, I could not, I had a very difficult time reconciling the two reports. I had to literally look at every sentence and compare them, just to make sure that, you know, so next time, we should have one committee, hash it out, one meeting, two meetings, five meetings, and then we have a report, it's one report, and then we have a public hearing, it's on that one report, I think it would go a lot more swimmingly. So just my uh, advice for the future that I don't think we should have this be fragmented into committees and then conjoined in a, in a, in a public hearing. I think it's confusing. Thank you.
Thank you. So Counselor, uh, just to note, it was done that way out of an abundance of procedural caution, but we have since determined uh, with the aid of the uh, actually the research done by the City Solicitor's Office a couple of years ago, uh, that we could have done it as a joint committee. Uh, personally, that will probably be my recommendation in the future, but of course, as always, you or any other counselor are free to make a motion to send it to council as a whole, uh, which would require a suspension of the rules.
I, I would, I would always advocate council as a whole. Because number one, I don't recall ever doing a joint committee meeting in my fourteen years on the council. It's always been either one committee or council as a whole. So procedurally, to me, that's irrelevant. It should have been council as a whole, and that wouldn't have required any procedural fact finding. Plus, if you have a joint committee, Mr. President, you have, again, you have not a full contingent of the city council at each, either committee. Some committee council members are not on either committee, and they may have input that's not get put in, and then it gets even more confusing in my opinion. So I just, I don't want to belabor the point. The next time this happens, we have a council as a whole process. We should utilize that, not have two committees meet jointly, because then you're still not getting the full council. So council as a whole just, to me, kills two birds with one stone. Just, just have everybody in the table. For something that, something like this, that, that's.
Duly noted.
So that's.
Duly noted. Uh, there, there is, I will note, no further bundles of the existing zoning overhaul uh, that will be considered by committees, by, you know, smaller committees or council as a whole committee.
And that's my fault too. Like you said, I didn't, I didn't think to send it to council as a whole or recommend it. I totally missed that with.
Understood.
So, thank you.
Well, we can address it next time it comes up, uh, which will hopefully be a good number of years in the future. Uh, all right, that said, I believe I had a motion to accept the report without action.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is accepted. There is no action taken uh, until the public hearing at the next meeting. Uh, now a report from the Committee on Legislative Affairs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, uh, the Legislative Affairs Committee met on February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth following the Economic Development Committee meeting. Uh, we took up the same agenda. Uh, it was the uh, bundle uh, three of the uh, zoning ordinance changes. Um, and, and there were numerous changes that were made by, by both committees. Um, the changes that Legislative Affairs uh, recommended and, and approved are in the um, at the URL that was provided in the uh, the agenda for this evening's meeting. I, I won't belabor them by going, going through them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It is for the council.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Uh, can I get that as a motion to accept without action?
Accept without action.
Thank you.
Again.
All right, I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, it is accepted and will be referred to the public hearing. Uh, report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Miss. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for uh, filling in for me uh, last week. I had a product that I couldn't get out of. Um, Finance Committee met on two matters. Twenty-one, twenty-one, in order that the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from the CARES Act, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, CBG CV three program in the approximate amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars for the purpose of said grant as follows, homeowner and renter assistance, a hundred and fifteen thousand, homelessness, homelessness services, twelve thousand, support for students, eighty thousand, food insecurity, twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two. Uh, that was adopted, and twenty-two, twenty-one was in order that the City of Fitchburg approves the expenditure of funds from the Mass Emergency and Management Agency Grant in the approximate amount of five thousand dollars for the purpose of said grant, which is to purchase equipment for the city's Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, and that was adopted.
Move to accept the report.
I act, I have a pending motion from Counselor Boishman and a second from Counselor Walsh, actually, but thank you. Uh, the more the merrier. And uh, if there is no objection, we will accept and approve the uh, recommendations of the Finance Committee. Next, we have our public hearings. The first is zero, zero, nine, twenty-one. Uh, Unitil Fitchburg Gas and Electric Company for proposed new poll number eight on McIntyre Road approximately uh, fourteen hundred and seventy feet west of the intersection of Williams Road as shown on sketch plan number thirty-four fifty-six L dated one, five, twenty-one. Uh, we have with us this evening, uh, Mr. James D. representing Unitil, I believe. Uh, Mr. D., would you like to present the petition? Oh, I'm sorry. I, I do have to formally declare the hearing open.
Okay. Uh, yep, my name is uh, Jim D. with Unitil, and uh, thank you for getting the poll hearing back on the agenda so quickly. Um, I got a little mixed up the last time with the uh, council meeting starting later than usual. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, yeah, Unitil is uh, um, what we are looking to do is uh, get your permission to install one pole, um, which would be pole number eight on the sketches, if you have in front of you, um, on the lot line. Um, it's just past the intersection of Alpine Road, and that's the uh, uh, McIntyre Road, the paper road portion of uh, McIntyre Road. And uh, for the purpose of uh, providing electricity to a new house that's going in, um, I believe it's once, see the one fifty-five or one seventy-three McIntyre Road. Um, so that's uh, pretty much what we're trying to do.
All right, uh, I am going to note for the record that there does not appear to, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Nieves, you did say you had a comment on this item. Uh, could you please state your name and address for the record and then note whether you're for or against before uh, proceeding?
Yeah, I live on one fourteen Philip Street in Fitchburg, um, and we are, I am building a house for my husband, uh, which will be one fifty-five McIntyre Road. So I was just asking for permission for you to allow us to have electricity in our new home.
I will take that as being in favor.
Exactly.
All right, well, uh, I don't know if you're moving from elsewhere in the city or new to the city, but if so, welcome to Fitchburg.
Yeah, no, we live on Philip Street.
Oh, okay.
We're actually selling our house. We actually just had a um, open house on Sunday and it went very well. We had fifty people come.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it was crazy. So, we're excited.
Good, good, excellent. All right, uh, in that case, I am going to open it up to the council. Any counselors wishing to ask questions, make comments? I'll note for the record that there does not appear to be anyone else in the audience relative to this uh, petition. Uh, I have Counselor Kuchar.
Uh, President Zarella, I think uh, uh, Counselor Boishman got ahead of me.
Oh, I'm sorry, he did. I got that blended in with the previous uh, spring of motions. Counselor Boishman?
Yeah, uh, I was up there quite a few times, nothing against your property. Uh, I think that we as city fathers that has put the, left the neighborhood hanging. Uh, I'm not, as you all know, a fan of poles, a, a fan of wires. Now, if you went up there and you looked at the property at one thirty-nine, and you stopped at Alpine Road and you took, took a look at that gray house, you see that they put the service on the ground. Uh, it looks a lot neater, it looks a lot better, and if you take a look to your right of that, uh, that house right next to it, that would be uh, one nineteen. You got about twenty-five to forty feet of line hanging from one twelve going all the way to this house, and then having a, a thing on the side of his house, which actually ruins the property and ruins the neighborhood. Uh, I think we let the city down. I, I feel we left the city down. I understand what Counselor Hasen, Andy says to me one time, it costs too much money. I could see if it was just one house, but we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and maybe more going up, up there. So it's not just one house. It's a lot more houses going up. And I look at it as, you may call me sexist if you want, we always try to preserve a pretty woman and because we want a, a nice looking woman, and I think nature is, mother nature is a pretty woman. And I really feel that the services up there should go underground and not have uh, twenty-five to forty feet of line going across their yards. That's how I like, if you went up there and you saw her, you would, you would say the same thing that I'm saying. I think I told Counselor Squallia to go up there and look, and that, and other counselors, so uh, that's how I feel about it. I'm not going to accept this. I think it should go underground. Uh, I keep on saying that. We gotta start somewhere and we might as well start up in that area. So that's how I feel.
Uh, Counselor, just, just a moment. Uh, Counselor Kuchar, if you're willing to hold off a moment?
I am.
Ms. Nieves has a comment to make, and I'll note for the record that for these purposes, I am treating her as a co-petitioner.
So we are gonna put the um, electrical lines underground to our house from that pole. Just to let you know that. I like nature too.
Thank you. And uh, Mr. D., would you like to speak to the feasibility uh, briefly? Just, just uh, any technical notes you'd like to make about that?
Are you, you talking to me now?
Yes.
Oh, um, not really. I mean, the uh, the whole neighborhood, the whole street, pretty much that whole area is, is overhead. Um, you know, I mean, if you do go underground, uh, New England is loaded with big rocks and ledge and it, it does get very difficult going underground. I can see going underground from the pole to the houses. Um, you know, um, that type of deal, but um, you never know where you're gonna be taken off either. Um, if somebody else builds and they're way off the road and you get this underground, you, you just can't splice in the middle of a, a line that is going down the road. It, it has to be designed like a, like an underground development where you know where everything's going and you can't, you can put the boxes so that you can take off left or right like you can with a pole, you know, so it, it does have its uh, advantages having the poles there. And like I said, it's the whole area is overhead.
Okay.
They, they are going underground, you know, from the pole to the house.
All right, thank you for explaining. Uh, Counselor Kuchar?
Thank you very much. Um, I, with all due respect to uh, Mr. Boishman, um, knowing, knowing Ward Three as well as I do, um, there's a lot of granite, there's a lot of rock, there's, it would be so expensive to put in a line uh, underground up there. Um, I mean, cause it, that's, that's pretty much mountainous country up there, to be quite honest with you, and it would be kind of, kind of difficult to bury a line. Um, so I understand, it would be, it would be nice if we didn't have to worry about having lines overhead, but unfortunately, we're gonna have. Um, but uh, the original reason why I um, I put in my name to say something is, uh, Ms. Nieves uh, actually contact, contacted me. Um, and this was supposed to be on uh, March sixteenth, our March sixteenth meeting, and uh, I had it advanced so we could get this pole up and uh, get, get, get her house.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, uh, Counselor Dina Tally?
Thank you. Since I represent this area as well, you know, my, my first question is, if, if it were to go underground, the, the pole, have no pole, who pays for that? Who pays for it, the homeowner?
The, the home, the, um, Unitil does give the homeowner, you know, one pole and one section of wire. Um, if they were to dig underground, they would be, yeah, they would be paying, you know, the cost.
Right, so, you know, thi- this is one of those topics where, you know, it was said that we need to start somewhere. Well, I consider that to be grossly unfair. Um, we have passed hundreds of these kinds of petitions, and to just do a hard stop on this uh, resident and her, and her residence to force upon her thousands of dollars and more expenses than that they were not planning for, because we decided to wake up one day and say, we're gonna beautify Fitchburg by not having one pole be put up, um, I think is not correct. Now, I know that there is going to be pushback about what I'm going to say. These kinds of matters always annoy me. Uh, not talking about the resident, I'm talking about the discussion where you have, I understand we all have the same voting power, no matter where we represent. Here you have a situation where the ward counselor is in favor of this, and the counselor who doesn't represent this area has a problem. It's not a ward two. So if Counselor Kuchar had issues with this, I'd bear a little more weight, but even then I wouldn't agree with it because it's, it's ridiculous to say that we are not beautifying the city because we're having overhang poles. Okay? We have poles everywhere. Every city in town has them. I have never once heard a resident in my fifteen years say to me, this city doesn't look good because of the poles. So it's a burden on the resident, an unnecessary burden, and where do you draw the line? If this was a completely new section of the city, that doesn't have any houses up there at all, there were no poles to begin with, I'd understand there being an argument to put underground. But when you start on that path, you can't stop. It's not fair, and to say that it impacts the beautification, evidently not. That area is ripe for development up there. There are a lot of houses going on up there. Not just one, there's several. Marshall Road two and Ward five, lot of development up there. There's poles, it's not deterring people from investing in the city, and those tracts of land and those houses being built are not cheap. So, I mean, I, I don't understand the argument. There's never been an argument like that. I think this is nitpicking, cherry picking, and I support this going in. and I support it going in for common sense reasons, that you can't just do a hard stop in an area that already has been doing it. We have this argument or discussion every single time, you know, and I guess I'm being, uh, I guess I, I'm not out of bounds, I just, it always, it always amazes me that a, a district councillor takes so much interest in an area that he doesn't or she doesn't represent. They have an equal vote, I get that, but they don't represent the area, so they're so invested in it, perhaps they should be a councillor at large. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ginatalli, uh, we have councillor Van Hazinga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, I will agree with Mr. Boishman, that if, all of the factors aside, underground utilities are better than above ground, they are more aesthetically pleasing, they do have certain resistance to, to weather and, and breakage, but the fact is you can't have this kind of move underground on a piecemeal basis. That this typically works when you have a new subdivision, when you're putting in new roads, in new utilities, you would run it underline, underground, and that's what happens in the city. But when we're putting up a pole here, a pole there in rural areas of the city, it does not make any sense at all to put them underground, from a practical standpoint. Uh, in those areas, you continue with what you have, which is poles. When we're building new subdivisions, new roads, new utilities, we put them underground, that's how we handle it, and that's the best way to handle it.
Thank you. Um, I have councillor Boishman for the second time.
You know, I wanna make one thing clear, I live in Pittsburgh too. Just because I'm a Ward Two councillor, I happen to live here and I like beautification. I'm not picking on the lady that's building the house, what I did say, we allow, we allow one, two, three, four, five poles up there from where it started. We got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and maybe more properties going in. Nine properties, and an average cost of four hundred thousand dollars of value. That up there is, is a beautiful area, it's not part of downtown or Clegg on or Ward Five or Ward Four, it's a beautiful area, it's, and why, why wouldn't you want to preserve nature? Why wouldn't you? I mean, which week on Monielum Road, when Unitil wanted to cut down the trees, people got all, and the olives, all up and on because they wanted to cut down the trees, were they wrong? Were they wrong because they didn't want their trees cut down? Tell me that one. Because they wanted beautification. I'm not trying to give Unitil a hard time, I'm not trying to give the lady a hard time, but there's eleven, what, I just said ten properties and plus more going up there? I say if it was one house, absolutely right, knock yourself out, I agree with you. But you got more than one house going up there, you got more, maybe it's not forty houses, but you got ten. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Uh, I see councillor Ginatalli, but councillor Hughes has not spoken yet, so councillor Hughes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I agree with Mr. D in terms of possibly a slippery slope. When you start digging, you don't know what you're gonna get into, and it could be, end up costing more to try and do that, so I don't see where it would make something look worse or make it look better. Either way, a pole is a pole, we, like, like councillor Ginatalli said, they're all over the city, all over the country. Uh, you know, so, but I'm gonna side with Mr. D and say, if you don't know what you're gonna get into, then it's best to leave it alone. You know, cause it could end up costing the developers, the people who are building up there, already spending thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, could end up costing everyone more, and that's something that we absolutely do not want. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, councillor Ginatalli.
I just wanna make something clear, I live on Monielum Road, I know exactly what he's talking about. That was Unitil doing tree management, which we've been yelling at them for years, that they don't do. They weren't clearing good trees because they felt like it. They have arborists who review those trees and they knock them down if they need to come down to prevent mass electrical failure. So we don't have a two thousand and nine, two thousand and eight ice storm, and the residents in this neighborhood that I live in did not have a problem with that, because most of those trees were dead. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, I'll just note, uh, on my part that I think if there is, I, I will agree with councillor Van Hazinga, if there is a desire to move more towards underground poles, we need to do it in a systematic and prospective way, not an ad hoc manner. I would suggest that if there is a desire by the council, and I do not pretend to know how many councillors would or would not support it, uh, if there is a desire to make a broader policy in favor of underground hookups, that should be done via ordinance, not by, uh, our decisions on individual, uh, poll authorizations. Uh, that said, if all have been heard, I now declare the hearing closed, and the matter is for the council.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve, uh, speaking on the motion, Madam Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Councillor Hughes.
Yes.
Councillor Schultz.
Yes.
Councillor Skwalia.
Aye.
Councillor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Councillor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Councillor Boishman.
No.
Councillor Kuchar.
Yes.
Councillor Ginatalli.
Yes.
Councillor Fleming.
Yes.
That is nine to one.
Thank you, uh, that, uh, being concluded, we will now uh, take up the continuation of public hearing zero twenty-nine twenty, the amendment of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, uh, the, actually, the listing on the agenda is a legacy listing, it doesn't describe our current, uh, agenda tonight, uh, but this is phase, this is phase two, bundle two of the, uh, zoning ordinance amendments. Um, and we have here, uh, Tom Skarowski from Community Development, uh, could we please enable screen sharing for Mr. Skarowski?
Good evening, councillors, um, a- as we're waiting for screen sharing to be enabled. Um, just to give you just sort of a brief overview here, I'm gonna review the changes for phase two, bundle two of the zoning reform effort. Um, the last grouping of changes, phase two, bundle three, will be taken in the next meeting, March sixteenth. I'm, I'm gonna try my best tonight to review the reconciliation items where there was disagreement between Economic Development and the Legislative Affairs Committee, and also a few follow-up items that were recommended, um, by both committees, and I will do my best, uh, councillor Ginatalli, to make sure that you don't need any more Advil, and I'll try to explain this in a clear and concise fashion, um, tonight, and, and moving forward, um, with the third bundle, which, and it's been a complicated process, and I'm, I'm trying to do my best to make sure that it is clear and as concise as it can be and represents all the feedback we've, we've gotten over time. Um, so, do you all see the PowerPoint up on the screen yet, uh?
We do.
Great, and for those of you that have seen this about ten times so far, my condolences, but I do wanna just briefly, uh, review where we're at. Um, because I know there's some new, uh, folks at the table, we've got a twenty-member advisory committee, a twelve-person working group. We've been doing this for about sixteen, seventeen months at this point. Um, and it was a two-phase process, starting with, um, phase one, which was passed in August, that was more administrative, removing inconsistencies and errors, redundancies, condensing and clarifying. And then phase two is the more transformative work, uh, map changes, major use and dimensional changes, and three bundles over one continued public hearing, uh, we took on the first bundle, uh, about a month back. The second bundle is tonight, and again, the third and final bundle, um, at which point we would hope to close the hearing would be March sixteenth. So, tonight we'll take on accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as in-law apartments, infill development, agricultural zoning, off-street parking, and zoning in the RC District. And the third bundle on the sixteenth, we'll take a look at our Adaptive Industrial District, map changes, dimensional changes, um, some minor kind of unaddressed items like car sales on small lots, signage, multifamily development, and earth removal. Um, again, that will be on the sixteenth, uh, tonight, we'll start with bundle two. So, uh, with each item, I'll just review it in brief, and then note those areas where there were differences of opinion between the two committees and other areas where follow-up was recommended by those committees, and I'll show the follow-up on my screen. So, to start with farmer's market zoning, um, this formally allows farmers markets, it's currently prohibited in our ordinance, although everyone here knows we have farmers markets every year. Uh, we wanna actually be explicit and, uh, in our support of farmers markets in the city. Um, and with this ordinance, it would be allowed by right in commercial and industrial districts and by special permit in residential, uh, neighborhoods, either as a principal or an accessory use. And at least sixty percent of the vendors need to sell farm products and represent producer. So, some follow-up items from our last meeting, um, there was a request that we further define, uh, what the remainder of forty percent of the goods are that were sold. Um, and there was a request to receive definitions for farm products and value-added farm products from the Farmers Market Committee. Um, so, that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and pull up my screen here, and I know I have Ann Jaegel from uh, Growing Places, who is the manager of the Pittsburgh Farmers Market and rep- represents the Farmers Market uh, Advisory Committee to speak on a couple of these items, but, um, just briefly, I'll scroll down to the items in question, so again, in order to regulate a farmer's market, you have to define what it is, so in the definition, uh, we created an outdoor market at a fixed location operating on a regular schedule, uh, with at least sixty percent of all vendors selling farm products or value-added farm products. At least sixty percent of the vendors are producers, family members or employees of producers, et cetera. Um, so, again, the Legislative Affairs Committee recommended that we add verbiage to define the other forty percent, so sixty percent is farm goods, what's the other forty percent? And then to, um, define those further, so, um, I guess, councillor Zarella, I don't know how you wanna handle the, the items from the Farmers Market Committee, would this be an opportunity for Ann to provide her recommendations, do you want me to review them here first?
Uh, I would say, uh, review them, and then when we open it up for questions, uh, we will allow, uh, Ms. Jaegel to also make any comments that she may have on the, on the matter.
Okay, great, so the Economic Development Committee did discuss whether that sixty percent figure was too high. Um, originally, we had started at seventy-five percent. Um, the Farmers Market Committee, uh, subsequent to our, our meeting, has made the recommendation that we have a fifty, fifty split. Fifty percent farm goods, fifty percent non. And then further still, they made a recommend, here says the primary purpose of a farmer's market is connecting and mutually benefiting Massachusetts farmers, communities and shoppers while promoting and selling products grown and raised by participating farmers, flea markets, yard sales and auctions are not flea market, are, are not farmer's market, I'm sorry. So this section here, the primary purpose, they made a recommendation, the primary purpose of connecting and mutually benefiting local farmers, communities and shoppers while promoting and selling products grown and raised by participating farmers in addition to local artisans and crafters. So their recommendation, in other, other words, would be to strike this section here and add the language as crafted here. Um, and then in addition to that, um, the Farmers Market Advisory Committee had made a recommendation to further define value-added farm products. Our definition is here that we started with, and the Farmers Market Committee has added a definition here. Value-added products are raw agricultural products that have been modified or enhanced to have a higher market value and or a longer shelf life, some examples include fruits made into pies or jams, meats made in a jerky and potatoes, and the successive value-added products is to market a high-quality product that's reasonably priced and available in a convenient location for the consumer to purchase. So those were the recommendations from the Farmers Market Advisory Committee.
Alright, I'm going to, uh, have us take each of these segments individually, as we have in the past. Uh, so first, we need to determine our actions on the uh, cha- the proposed changes to the amendment. Uh, councillor Skwalia, was that what you were going to comment on?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, so, um, I, I think, uh, before we vote, it would probably be prudent to bring Ann Jaegel in, because, uh, I did know, notice, uh, the first recommendation for the fifty-fifty split, the actual recommendation that I read was a recommend that, that we have a recommendation of a fifty-fifty split of, um, farmers versus, uh, makers crafts, um, but that it should be up to the market manager based on current market context. Um, and, uh, Ann Jaegel had found that, uh, last year was an anomaly of seventy-five percent vendors of makers and crafts, and, uh, in the past, it had been more farmers, so sometimes the years may shift, so hence, she wanted it to be based, uh, on the decision of the market manager.
So, uh, I will certainly, uh, invite her to weigh in. I will say that is my understanding of the current wording that we are not actually setting a split between farm products versus artisan products, because I believe under the current definition, the, uh, oh no, we were supposed to add a definition of artisan craft.
And, um, and I'm sorry, I did do that.
Oh, yes, I see, yep.
But I, I didn't know if it was appropriate to pause and allow for, um, the comment, but I can just go there as well if it's helpful.
Yeah, I think we, I think we should go through it, because these seem to be integral changes that weave together.
Right, so, the, basically, I had added a clause C, so it said, you know, at least sixty percent of the vendors sell farm products or value-added farm products, B, at least sixty percent of the vendors are producers, et cetera, and C, the remaining forty percent of vendors serve either educational uses or are vendors of artisan project, prod- products. Um, and, and then essentially added, this would require we add a definition of artisan products as handicrafts, including but not limited to glass, ceramics, clothing, jewelry, pro- uh, paintings and sculptures. That would actually have to be added to our definition section at the end, um, and educational uses are within our current ordinance, those are, you know, basically, uh, nonprofit or public um, uses pertaining to the public good. To summarize briefly, be- because often we do have tables there that, that serve a public purpose, but they might not be selling a good per se, um, so, you could throw that last one out altogether, but I thought it might be a helpful add. For example, we've had tables out before to sign people up for the census, as an example, um. So, those were the, the additions and this, this clause added, I just, I'll pause there, I guess.
Alright, uh, so Ms. Jaegel, and by the way councillor Boishman, I do see your marker in there, uh, Ms. Jaegel, would you like to comment on what's been discussed so far, or would you like to wait until we hit, until we break out into the individual changes?
Whatever's most helpful to you, I mean, I can comment now, it might be most useful, just so you know the rationale behind, okay? So, when it comes to the farmer's market definition in particular, that was taken from the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, um, which is our, um, state-run body through the government, and then I customized it, so I added, um, based on what the Planning and Development, um, Committee had talked about, um, making sure there were also including not just farmers, that we know our markets are more diverse than that. Um, when it comes to value-added products, um, that definition, um, I also pulled, um, from um, UMass Extension, actually, I thought that was a really good definition from us, so all these definitions that I pulled are local, um, which I like. So, that's, that's the first piece I just wanted to share. The second, um, piece around the splits that we're talking about, I think it's really difficult to box us in. I think it's really difficult to box us in and say that, you know, it's this percent versus that percent. I think that's really restrictive, and I think they should just be, we had had a conversation previously just about having strong language about encouraging, you know, a certain percentage of things rather than it being so restrictive. So, you know, and versus but versus or, right? So just in terms of all of those things taking into consideration, it should really be up to the market manager to establish what makes the most sense. If that market manager is qualified and really has the best interests of the community and the market at heart, they will make the right decision. And if they do not, I can promise you that all of the vendors and residents will be at City Council knocking down their doors because something is wrong. So, I mean, you can trust in our public that they will report something's wrong. So I just want to make sure that we're not so restrictive, that we're breaking policy, you know, from year to year or coming to City Council and requesting changes in ordinances that maybe could have been prevented by just making it less restrictive.
All right, thank you. So that said, I think first, we need to address whether we want to add the definition of artisan. How was it worded, Tom? Artisan products?
Right. So.
Yes, artisan products. Because that will, that will inform what we do with the split and some of the other regulations. So I would put that matter before the council. Counselor Boishman, do you, is your comment related to that?
No, it was related to sixty, sixty, forty up there top.
All right, I'll come back to you when we get to that part, then.
All right.
Make a motion to include the proposed definition of artisan products.
I have a motion and second. While we have the screen share active, I need to ask that if I ask for unanimous consent, any objections be entered in the chat box because I can't see everyone's face at the same time. So if there are no objections, we will, and, and I want to remind everyone, we are only indicating approval of the council on any of these changes. We aren't actually making the changes until we're actually done reviewing the entire ordinance next meeting. So I, if there, so there being no objection, we will indicate approval of the council for the proposed edit. That said, do we wish to adopt, what, let's talk about the split. Do we wish to have a hard limit? Do we wish to set it differently? And if we are not going to have a hard limit, do we still want to specify that any uses that are not farm products or value-added farm products must be artisan or educational? I have Counselor Schultz. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have Counselor Boishman first on the split.
My question is for Tom, it's a quick question. On the sixty, forty split, he says, I can't, he's got to go down, bring it down. He said that you have to be a producer to sell. Like if I had a peddler's license and I wanted to come to the farmer's market and sell fruits and vegetables, but I don't grow it, can I?
Well, under this definition, as it exists without any changes, you could, and up to forty percent of the people selling could be a non-producer food seller.
And I would like to just note-
And whatever.
I, I'd just like to note briefly that the split that we're discussing at the moment is between the farm products and value-added farm products and anything else. We'll get to the producers versus non-producers in a moment. Although you, you can feel free to continue your comment though, Counselor, since I didn't say that upfront.
No, the only reason why I asked this question because back in the nineties, I sold fruits and vegetables off of my, my pickup truck. And I, and I went around the neighborhood, but I picked them up in Chelsea, or the western part of the state. And then on my way down, I used to stop at some of the conked farm stands, uh, growers on that area, and, and buy my vegetables from them and bring them back and sell them in Pittsburgh. And that was the only reason why I didn't grow anything. It's not that I'm going to do it again, but I hate to say no to somebody that wants to do it. They say we, you're not allowed to, when they're selling something that's nutrition too. They're selling fruits and vegetables. Just that they don't grow it, they buy it from the farm stand. They buy it from a farmer and they bring it back to sell. That's all. That's all I have to say. That's it.
Okay, so Counselor Schultz.
Thank you, Counselor Zarella. When, when this item of the sixty, forty split came up at the Economic Development Committee, I raised the, the question because at the time, it was at a fifty-one, forty-nine split. And I asked, well, you know, when people go, most people go to farmer's markets, they're looking for farm products, you know, fruits and vegetables. But after hearing Ms. Yeagle's comment about being too restrictive, if, if we leave it up to the manager, maybe that's the way to go because, you know, we don't know from year to year how, how the supply of farm products is going to be. And maybe there'll be more of the artisan products at some of these farmer's markets. We didn't, you know, we don't want, I don't know what the enforcement would be, I mean, how that would go, but I, I'm certainly, you know, you know, taking it into consideration that maybe, maybe we shouldn't be so restrictive now that she's, Ms. Yeagle's come back and said that, you know, maybe, maybe we don't need a split at all. So I'd be in favor of being less restrictive at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Squallia.
Thank you. As a strong supporter and assistant to the farmer's market for many years, I strongly urge the council to pass what Ms. Yeagle suggested is a suggested fifty, fifty-fifty split with the actual decision up to the market manager based on current context. And I'd also like to add one thing, you know, this, the particular language says that the vendors need to be fifty-fifty or sixty, forty, but sometimes at the farmer's market, you'll have one farm vendor, say, or two farm vendors, but they have five tables. You know, one farm vendor might have an enormous amount of product, right? So you don't, but then, then in complement to that, there'll be five artisan vendors, one table with the census, someone selling perfume or whatever. But, you know, the amount of space taken up is, is very large for the small number of farm vendors sometimes. So, you know, by adopting this less restrictive verbiage, it allows the farmer's market to continue as it has been for many years and hopefully continue to grow and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll note that I have no objection to putting more of a soft quota rather than a hard quota on this, provided that we do maintain the portion of the definition that says that the uses that are not farm products or value-added farm products will be artisan or educational. Because obviously, we don't just want to open this up to anyone selling anything. I'd also suggest, I don't have my forty A Section Three precedents in front of me, Mr. Solicitor, but I would suggest that when we put this in ordinance form, to the maximum extent allowable by forty A Section Three, we put some limit on the number of educational uses that are not farm-related. In other words, I understand the desire to have a census table and things like that, but we don't necessarily want it to be a free-for-all for anything that can be termed educational as opposed to say a few things like a census table and mostly things like, you know, displays teaching kids about, you know, farm procedures or something like that. You know, just to kind of keep it in tune with what we're aiming for here and not just make it a fair, you know what I mean? But again, there may be statutory limitations and presidential limitations to our ability to do that. And obviously, we don't want to have any ordinance that would contradict that. That being said.
Move to accept the fifty-fifty recommended split with the market manager with the final decision based on current market context. Second.
I have a motion and second. The, the motion and second is to accept the recommendation, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm restating this just because it's a complex ordinance. To accept the recommendation to render the fifty-fifty split a recommendation rather than a mandate and to leave the final determination up to the market manager, what percentage will be farm products or value-added farm products versus educational or artisan tables?
Yes.
If there is no objection, oh, I'm sorry, I have Counselor Schultz to speak on the motion.
Yeah, I, I don't know where this fifty-fifty split, I didn't, I didn't hear Ms. Yeagle say there was, there had to be a fifty-fifty split. I just thought it was going to be, you know, up to the manager. Is that, did I miss something?
Yeah, no, Counselor Schultz, you, you did not, the, when we spoke about it, I don't, I think we talked about, you know, making it liberal, more liberal than it is. But the actual verbiage that I sent from the Advisory Committee to Tom was a fifty-fifty soft recommendation. So that statement that Counselor Squallia made is accurate based on what we sent. And it seems like, you know, now we've had this discussion, so it's really up to you all of what you think is, is best based on precedent and other ordinances.
Yeah, because I know you, you, at the committee meeting, you had a fifty, fifty-one, forty-nine split at one, at one point. But, yeah, you know, I, my recommendation was, we don't have a, a split at all, we just leave it up to the manager. I think that would be, because if we, if we do, do have a split and we, we can't satisfy it, then, then there's a problem, so.
That's a recommendation of a fifty-fifty split, not a mandate.
Okay, well, you think we need that?
So just, just as a brief procedural matter, I do need to note that when there is a motion on the table going forward, we will not be able to accept any comment from, no, no, it's not your fault, Ms. Yeagle. I, I didn't want to cut you off without having said anything about it beforehand, but you are not responsible for knowing the rules of the council. Nor is it Counselor Schultz's fault because we have, we are often loose about that rule. But because this is going to be such a procedurally intense hearing here, I am going to try to stick to the rules fairly strictly. So that's just a note going forward, that if anyone has questions after a motion has been made for either Mr. Skrowski or any other participant, we're going to need to ask unanimous consent of the council to withdraw the motion first. That being said, I now have a motion and second to adopt this new verbiage. If there is no objection, and again, please use the chat box if you have an objection. If there is no objection, we are going to note the sense of the council that this language should be adopted. Next up, we have the, read, the change in verbiage of the end of the farmer's market definition per the Farmer's Market Advisory Committee to change the word Massachusetts to local and to add to the end, in addition to local artisans and crafters.
Move to accept as suggested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second.
A point of clarification?
Certainly, speaking on the motion, Counselor Dan Hasig.
This motion, does this include the elimination of the sentence flea markets, yard sales, and auctions are not farmer's markets?
I do not believe that it does.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Or at least I, I would personally not recommend that it does. I'm not certain of what the farmer's market recommendation was, but I believe in the initial discussion, they had agreed that they wanted to exclude such uses. Since, if, actually, if I could ask that the motion be withdrawn so that we can inquire of Ms. Yeagle what the intention of the committee was?
Yes, I withdraw.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, the motion is withdrawn. Ms. Yeagle, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I think, could you just restate the last part one more time? I think it's fine to leave it in there. I think we just wanted clarification on what a farmer's market was versus was not, but could you just restate it?
Yes, the question is whether the sentence flea markets, yard sales, and auctions are not farmer's markets was meant to remain in the ordinance.
I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. All right, would you like to renew your motion?
Move to accept as discussed.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, if there are no objections, then it is the sense of the council that the language should be adopted. Next, we have the change to value-added farm products. It's a large change, so I'm not going to read it off. I'm going to just ask that maybe Mr. Skrowski, could you zoom in slightly on your screen?
I'll add it here so it's a bit larger.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
This is what, what they had originally voted on. This is the Farmer's Market Committee's recommendation. In blue.
Okay, so, Ms. Yeagle, I, I actually have a few questions since I don't see anyone who is cued to speak yet. First, what was the rationale behind eliminating the language requiring Board of Health inspection for food vendors?
Is that part of this section?
It was in the initial definition. It is not in the included definition. Was that intentional or was that just a textual oversight?
Textual.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And then, is there, what, what is your logic behind the last sentence of the recommended definition? Because as, as some of my colleagues may know, I'm generally down on non-operative language, language that won't actually affect the approval or denial of a permit. But I'd like to hear what the, what the rationale behind that sentence was.
Sure, so everything around healthy food access, you know, that, that we believe is important as a farmer's market and through the bi-local movement is around inclusion and equity. So making sure that those values are always part of what we do, as well as it's really diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this, that was language taken right from UMass Extension, and I thought it aligned really well with the values of, of, you know, our Farmer's Market Committee and in general, farmer's markets, which is why UMass Extension has it.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, any, any comments?
I have a que- I have a question or a comment, I guess.
Certainly, Counselor.
So in reading, you know, the definition suggested for value-added product, I don't really see how that conflicts with our current definition as shown in pink here. I, I, reading the, the value-added farm product definition we currently have, I think it incorporates everything that's been suggested, but it, it kind of codifies it in more specific language.
I, I would actually agree with that. I think if anything, it's slightly broader in that it also includes non-food products that are made from farm products. So, Ms. Yeagle, given that, without any objection to the new definition, but given that observation, would there be any strong objection from the committee if we retained the existing definition?
I'm unmuting, sorry.
No problem.
No, we actually, we took a stab at it because we had discussed that at the planning meeting, and that was something that we all wanted to look at in the Advisory Committee, but I think, you know, I think it's nitpicking at this point, so I think it's absolutely fine, as long as there's nothing offensive in it, that's, you know, gonna be exclusionary.
Okay, thank you, uh counselor Van Helsing.
Behappens to all of us, uh I had a concern about the second part of the existing definition. It appears to include a requirement of a license and uh inspection by the local board of health. And I'm just wondering if a definition is the best place to have a requirement like this.
That is a good point, and I should have caught that myself. So I would think it may be. I would gladly entertain a motion to move that to an operative portion of the ordinance.
Uh I would s- make the make that motion.
All right, uh I have a motion and second to move the licensing requirement to an operative portion of the ordinance. Speaking on the motion. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that that should be done. That said, do I have any motion regarding? Or rather, is there is there any counselor who would object to retaining the remainder of the existing definition as it stands? Seeing none, uh we won't make that an official motion o- of any sort, but. We'll simply move on from that section, since there is no one who is. Uh arguing against leaving it. Uh is that, has that covered all the changes, Mr. Skrowski?
I I have to go down one more rabbit hole before we wrap things up, um I think this will be the more complicated of the rest of the items, or at least I hope. But we we added a definition for artisan products, but then never referenced it in in the definition itself. Um I just wanted to point that out. Um we didn't reference it in the definition of the farmer's markets, so I, not to say it's even necessary, but if if we don't need it, then we should. Revoke that recommendation.
I would suggest language, uh though I will, though as the chair, I will not make the motion myself. Uh I would suggest language that adds to sub clause A of the definition, uh if you could scroll up slightly. Uh that adds to the end of sub clause A. Uh comma and the remainder of vendors. Operate. Either as vendors of artisan products or.
Oh, okay, I do, I do have that language, but the council hadn't voted on it yet, so I could, I could certainly add that in here.
Right, right, it is um. Well, I I would add it to clause A, not B, because B is the part that says that um. It will be uh producers or relatives and so forth. Uh A is the part that says what will be sold, uh oh, actually, yes, you have that in part C, so. Uh whatever you just deleted from C, yeah, there's artisan products, so that works. I don't think we actually need to change anything from that. Except that the the final determination made by the market manager will need to be retooled. Verbal uh in terms of verbiage to make it clear that the manager has the authority to deviate from the recommended. Percentages with respect to clauses A and C. I don't believe we had discussed any deviation from clause B. Counselor Squallia?
You know, um shouldn't it shouldn't um it shouldn't, shouldn't it be A and B that we're talking about? And B is the producers, family members of producers, educational, um whatever, uh artisan. Whatever, um shouldn't there not be a C, cuz I mean, we're adding up to a hundred forty percent right there with C.
Uh actually, counselor, it's two different requirements. A and C, which probably should be shifted so that they're together. Um refer to what types of stalls exist. And B refers to who operates the stalls, that would go to counselor Bochman's comment about. Let's say it is farm products, is it farm products sold by farmers, or is it farm products sold by retailers? It's a separate requirement that is not related to the question of what can or cannot be sold.
I I lumped them together, A and B. And then have now C as its own separate item pertaining to the vendors being producers.
Yes, so A and B go together to describe what types of uses are allowed at the stalls. And then C goes to the question of who operates the stalls. Um with an aim towards encouraging, again, you know, local producers. As opposed to, say, a representative of Green Giant or something selling vegetables.
Move to accept the changes.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second to accept the changes as outlined. If there is no objection. Seeing none, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. All right, moving on.
To agricultural zoning or altogether, uh are are we staying with farmer's markets here, I missed that.
Uh to whatever is next on your agenda.
Okay, so agricultural zoning broadens the definition of agriculture to reflect the new agricultural economy. In other words, a farm fifty years ago just had to grow crops and take care of livestock. A farm today has to do a lot more than that, a farm has to do agrotourism, agro-commercial uses. Much like you'd see with Hollis Hills, where they don't just grow crops, they have um pumpkin patches, they have music, they have food. So this is just broadening the definition of things that an agriculturally exempt business can do. Um and. One other piece we added related to agriculture is we laid the groundwork for container farming. So this is a container farm in Worcester, at I believe Worcester State, uh Fright Farms, and you know, it it. Is a um not your grandmother's shipping container. And certainly includes the ability to have sort of an all-included grow facility for greens. And um it's something that's sort of happening in a lot of gateway cities throughout the Commonwealth and something we would like to allow for. In our zoning. Um one brief follow-up item, the economic development committee and the legislative affairs both agreed on all items within this definition. One thing, I think we got a little bit ahead of ourselves. Eh as we started to sort of define and redefine what an agriculture activity is. Um we're not actually allowed to do that, because that's the state's purview. Um they define what makes an agricultural activity. So this piece here. Needs to be changed per recommendation from the building commissioner and the city solicitor. Um because what we had up here in the original definition was originally. The definition in the mass general law for an exempt agricultural activity. Then we decided, oh, we didn't want horses in there, we didn't want domesticated animals, um we didn't want fur-bearing animals, but again. We have to nest all of this within the definition of an agriculturally exempt activity, which is what we see here. Um so that, again, both four uh committees agreed to the language, no need for reconciliation items, this was the only change. And this is a new item.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and second to accept the change at the recommendation of the city departments. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Okay, then RC district zoning, um the RC districts throughout the city are the densest urban residential neighborhoods. This is North Domain, this is Lower Cleogorn, this is the Patch, these are the areas kind of proximate to downtown. Um and what? This uh component of our changes does, it reduces lot sizes and frontage requirements. It allows single-family housing in the RC district with a five thousand minimum lot size, five thousand square feet. And just for a point of context, most other residential districts, you know, the minimum is at least ten thousand, so this halves that. Um it also allows for the subdivision of parcels, unlike the infill provision, which we'll get to later. Um so if somebody has one larger parcel in the RC district, they could theoretically carve it up into single-family. Uh development opportunities, and you know, a lot of the neighborhoods within the RC district are predominantly renter. Um communities, and this could be a great opportunity to bring new examples of affordable homeownership in these neighborhoods. Um and then I just wanted to note there are no reconciliation items here, both committees agreed uh on all fronts.
It is for the council, uh do, does anyone need to see further detail on this matter?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the changes. Seeing no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Now, um infill development, it was the next section, um and this allows for infill development. Um currently, uh single-family developments on a five thousand square foot lot in the RB. RC and the FSU district. Um what this tweak we're we're doing here would actually allow for, it removes the FSU district. Because you actually don't need special permissions to build a single-family home in the FSU district. Um if it's five thousand square feet, that's the minimum uh lot size already, so it's already permitted by right. Um and similarly in the RC district, given what the the council just approved in the previous vote. There's no need to have an infill provision here. Um because again, one can already build a five thousand square uh square foot, single-family home in the RC district without any special provision. So reconciliation items noted are one eighty-one, four two five three, section C and sections E. And I will um go to those now. Okay, so um one, and and there was one follow-up item that was a recommendation by both committees. Uh and I'll start there, so eligibility requirements for an infill lot. Um I added a section, the subdivision of a parcel that it was existing at the time of the adoption of this section. Whatever date this is adopted, um in order to create an infill lot is not permitted. Um so again, this is just in the RB district, which is a little bit less dense than RC. But more dense than our RA or rural residential neighborhoods. And the idea here is if you have a large lot, you can't split it up, let's say you have a twenty thousand square foot lot. Within this provision, we're trying to discourage somebody from splitting that up into four single-family homes. Because that's not the intent of the infill provision, infill is really intended to be development that takes place within. Uh let's say a demo site or a a former site of a home, or one does not exist. And then that's that's one addition, um and then here are the the two items where reconciliation is needed. There is this eligibility requirement that further makes explicit, a lot may not be subdivided for the purpose of creating an infill lot. Um at legislative affairs, this clause was added, provided that they may be granted a special permit as an infill lot. By the planning board, provided it passes through municipal ownership at a time subsequent to the date of the enactment of this amendment. So basically, if a property falls in a municipal hands, then um they could take advantage of this infill lot requirement. The economic development committee struck that down. And then lastly, we have um this section here, which allows for um. I guess some flexibility in subdividing uh smaller sized lots uh within the RB district. This was also struck down by economic development committee, um so I, I don't know if you all would like to talk these through or or counselor. Zrela, I guess I'll I'll hand it back to you to discuss.
Thank you, um first, I just wanna ask real quick, it looks like the section that is. Listed as a strike through of D, uh at the top, near the top of the page currently. A lot may not be subdivided for the purpose of creating an infill lot. Is there any use for that, given the language that we added just above it? That says. That an existing lot may not be subdivided. Is that completely duplicative now, I think it is.
It would be duplicative if the council voted not to accept. This recommendation by legislative affairs.
Right, okay, um. Either way, I think probably that section and section B above should be merged. Because they're saying the same thing in two different locations, so if we add the legislative affairs language. It should go into section B, I think, uh. And just get rid of section D altogether, because they they read exactly the same. That said, the I I'm going to ask the council for comment, but I wanted to comment on these. Because these are actually changes that I had initially recommended. Uh the logic behind the municipal ownership provision there was because sometimes the city. Gains uh properties in tax title. And the problem is that, let's say someone has a pre-existing lot, subdivides it, they're not allowed to make it an infill lot. But then if the city acquires one of the one portion of the subdivided lot. That is five thousand square feet but less than ten thousand. The city is then stuck with a useless parcel of land, because the previous owner did something they weren't supposed to. Uh the intent here is to relieve the city of that burden. By saying, look, if we acquire a parcel that was wrongfully subdivided or that was subdivided in a manner that would not allow for building. Uh we can still take advantage of the infill lot provision, even though we're not going to allow anyone else to do so. Uh counselor Van Helsing on that point?
Yes, I think in the economic development committee uh meeting, there was some, during the discussion, there was some concern with this clause. Part of it is that, while it may appear to give the city more flexibility in managing these parcels. There are a lot of questions about how this works. Um as written, it references at a time subst- subsequent to. Does that mean at any point following, a owner of a lot that was in municipal ownership could then apply for a infill provision? That's one problem, I think another problem is that there are situations where. It may be better for a lot owned by the city not to be developed as an infill lot. That it may be better served to sell it to in a butter through a side yard program, to improve or give more space, more parking. Uh to adjacent properties, but if we have this clause, there is nothing to keep. The buyer of that land from then applying for a special permit for an infill lot. And I think the city never makes money on taking properties by tax title. And. It it's just, it it is, it is a burden to the city to take a property, to sell it, it never recovers the money that is due. And that shouldn't be looked at what the process, the the intent of the process is. I think also you have the hypothetical situation of a owner of a lot subdividing it into two non-conforming lots. There's no motivation for an owner to do that if they can't prove it as a infill lot, so it's something that's not likely to happen. Um so I think really this goes back to the intent of the infill provision. Which was to allow the improvement of sort of orphaned lots that were often previously had a home that was taken down at some time. And it's just sitting with nobody to love it, nobody to take care of it. And this gives some motivation to a developer to build a house that may still fit with the neighborhood in the community and improve that. But I think when you start to get into allowing the subdivision of parcels to create these parcels, you're really just reducing the zoning requirement. It's not fulfilling the initial intent of the provision.
Okay, thank you, those those are very good points, I think as to the first point, the um. Language not properly restricting future owners, that was admittedly an oversight, this is a passage that I drafted. Uh while on the phone with Mister Skrowski about a day and a half before the hearing. So I would agree that language, that if we were to adopt this, language would need to be added to make it clear. That it can only be granted a permit either at the request of the city or perhaps, uh. Immediately following a transfer by the city, uh, with, with that intent specified in the grant. Um. That said, um, I agree that the city is not going to make money off of things, uh. That, that was not the intention. The intention was more to avoid, again, having a lot sort of sit fallow because no one wants it. Um, and the reason someone might want to subdivide without being able to build on it. I think perhaps goes more to what the other portion of the lot might be useful for. Uh, for example, if someone wants to sell a portion of their lot. To an a butter or to a developer for some other purpose, uh. And retains a lot that is too small to build on, but too lar- but large enough for an infill. I agree, it's probably not very likely, but this was a concern that I believe was raised by solicitor prusiteri. Um. Regarding what might happen to the city if we got stuck with a, with a sort of non-grandfathered infill lot. Um. But again, it's, I agree, it is a relatively niche case, so. Uh, I will, I am, I am in favor of adding the language with an appropriate tweak to restrict future owners. Um, but I will leave it obviously to the council and I have no strong feelings one way or the other. Um, this particular.
To approve as recommended by the Economic Development Committee.
Check it.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve as recommended by Economic Development, that is without this added language, to be clear. Um. If there is no other objection, I will not raise an objection and force a roll call vote on this. Seeing no objection, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. Um, moving on to the other portion. This I feel even less strongly about, but ultimately the intent here was to allow for a person who has. An existing oversized lot. And an existing lot that's too small for an infill lot. To take a sliver off of the oversized lot and add it to the tiny lot to make an infill lot. Um, the idea being simply that if you have a lot that's four thousand square feet. That's going to sit empty. If you have a lot next to it that's fifteen thousand square feet and has plenty of yard. Maybe you can take a thousand square feet off of that lot, stick it on the smaller lot, and then you've got a buildable infill lot. Um, but again, it's. As, as my colleagues are well aware, I have a tendency to imagine corner cases that are unlikely to occur. Uh, and solve for them. So if the council feels this is simply too rare an occurrence to be worth legislating for, then. I am perfectly happy with allowing it to slide by for now. Do I have any motion relative to the proposed section? I believe it's actually section F.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the Economic Development Committee's recommendation.
Check it. I have a second. I have a motion and second to approve the Economic Development Committee's recommendation, which again, to be clear is. To adopt the ordinance without this language. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done. Uh, were there any other items in this portion, uh, Tom, that we need to address?
It was mentioned that you might want to. Get rid of this. A lot may not be subdivided for the purpose if this is duplicative, so essentially now. We can look at it without the markup. Don't hurt our eyes so badly. Um, but B and D are sort of, oh. So B and D are virtually identical, but B is more specific in that it lays out a date at which, um. You know, ineffective the date of the ordinance, you can no longer subdivide parcels to create an infill lot. Between now and whenever it's enacted, I suppose people could, um, but the intent is that, um. We put a timestamp on when subdivision happened because theoretically somebody could have done it ten years ago. Um, and we want to make clear what we're referring to here.
Make a motion to strike section D.
Second.
I have a motion and second to strike section D, which has just been highlighted for us. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done.
Okay, and that's it for infill. You have two sections left. So accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as in-law apartments, allow accessory dwelling units by right in the rural residential district and in.
You're paused again.
It's getting late, guys.
Quite all right.
It, it allows it by right in the rural residential in the RA district. Currently, it's by special permit. And by special permit in the RB district, which is unchanged. And importantly, it removes a five-year recertification requirement. Currently, every five years, anyone who. Has a, um, ADU permit has to go back to the ZBA and recertify. Um, and we felt that was an important, um, clarification to make because as you all know, you're going to invest in your property. And know that every five years that investment is subject to removal, um, you know, it disincentivizes people from taking that action. Um, so there was one item of reconciliation. Um, one eighty-one, three, two, one, two, section C, um, and I'm going to go ahead and go there now. Um, okay, so a- and it wasn't necessarily even a difference of opinion. But rather, the Economic Development Committee further clarified a definition of, um. How the external appearance could or could not change, because if somebody is building an in-law apartment, you don't want to just authorize them to build a huge new addition to their house. And call it an in-law apartment. The idea is it takes place within the structure of the building and the form of the building is relatively unchanged. So the definition here was amended to reflect that. Um, and the suggestion here is any addition to the existing structure to create an accessory apartment. Shall not create more than a fifteen percent increase in the gross floor area of the existing structure. So essentially you could make an addition, but it needs to be relatively minor in nature. Um, this is actually really just a, a tweak to make the definition more specific. Um, it already meant the same thing in all intents and purposes, but it was just, I think it's a better definition, frankly. That's it.
Motion to accept the change by economic development. Second.
Have a motion and second, speaking on the motion. If there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done. Can I have a motion on the whole, uh, section, please?
Motion to accept the whole section.
Second.
Have a motion and second, if there is no objection. It's the sense of the council that it should be done. And, uh, since I've been forgetting to do that honestly with the other sections, can I have a motion on the previously addressed sections? In their entirety.
Motion to approve the previously addressed sections in their entirety.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and second, if there is no objection. It is the sense of the council that it should be done.
All right, guys, last one. Um, off-street parking, uh, first of all, it clarifies the language of the existing ordinance. In a few key areas, um, including adding design standards to drive-throughs. It adjusts the table of parking regulations with an eye towards reducing the overbuilding of parking. A lot of times our requirements were requiring too many parking spaces, which is wasted. Uh, wasted land that could be used for development or, or conservation. Um, it removes the lack of clarity with building commissioner throughout the ordinance in the table. It said. You know, this use, uh, it needs X amount of parking spaces as determined by the building commissioner. It then shifted to a more clear definition. Um, and then a, a couple reconciliation items, table A four, multi-family housing. Um, there was an addition that suggested that parking requirements for main street housing units be different. Um, and then there was one follow-up item, one eighty-one, five, one, one, four, where the committees requested that we add some new language. Um, so again, there's one reconciliation item between the two committees and one item of follow-up. Now I'll go ahead and pull this section up. And we can take a look. Um, great. So let me unpause here. Okay, so the first thing to note. Um, briefly, there are sections throughout this that will say as determined by. Um. The special permit granting authority and the Legislative Affairs and Economic Development Committees requested. A clause that would clarify who is the special permit granting authority. Because it could be the ZBA, it could be the planning board, and even in some instances, it could be the city council. Um, because there is one case where the city council grants a special permit. So a clause was added here under the general requirements. Uh, with the exception of those projects that require special permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, but do not require a site plan review, the planning board shall serve as the special permit granting authority that determines off-street parking requirements pursuant to section. One eighty-one, five, one, two.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move to accept that addition. Second.
I got.
Have a motion and second.
I got one question on here.
Uh, go ahead councillor, uh, please do use the chat box though.
I, uh, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, go ahead.
I slightly don't understand, Tom, can you explain that more? Because on the one to four family, you were talking about Main Street. And I want to know, if we're going to change the rules on Main Street, then why aren't we changing the rules across the city?
Councillor, we haven't, councillor, we haven't gotten to that section yet. We're just taught, we just have a motion regarding the change highlighted in yellow on your screen. Which just addresses who the special permit granting authority is for vi- for parking, uh, waivers and so forth.
Uh, all right, okay, don't mind that, you got it.
I'll come back to you.
Yep.
All right, uh, so if there is no one else speaking on the motion and no objection. Then it is the sense of the council that this change should be made.
And then the only item of reconciliation in the table itself was with multi-family housing. Um, and the, the change was, you know, essentially. Is requested at Legislative Affairs that an asterisk be added here. That says residential developments with frontage on Main Street between its intersections at Day and Academy. With six or fewer residential units are not required to provide off-street parking. Um, and then the Legislative Affairs Committee recommended that, um, my office determine the fine-tuned zone before a final vote. Um, and then the Economic Development Committee amended it further by extending it to mechanic. So basically it would be from Day Street to the Upper Common. Um, any properties on Main Street, uh, any residential developments with frontage on Main Street. Um, with six or fewer residential units would not be required to provide off-street parking.
Councillor Van Helsinga? I think you may be.
Yes, no, I wanted to, to speak on this, especially since, uh, councillor Boishman had some questions. The intent of this is that currently in our, uh, table of uses. Residential uses on Main Street above the ground floor are, are exempt. They are allowed by right, it does not require a special permit. And the intent of that is to allow for the redevelopment of a number of smaller properties or. Properties in general, existing buildings that are underutilized in the upper stories, that, um, trends have changed downtown. It's no longer an office destination where people go to work. Um, downtowns across the state and other areas are transitioning to places where people live. People come to have fun and, and spend money and do things. And the intent is to make it easier to redevelop those underutilized portions of structures in the upper stories. And many of these buildings are located on small lots that are entirely improved by the building. There are a row of buildings and share common walls. And it is simply not feasible to allow for the provision of parking spaces on site. It just, it will not happen because there is no space for it. So if development of those properties is tied to a requirement to provide parking. They simply will not be redeveloped because it's not possible. And we do have the benefit of the downtown area has sufficient common parking available. In the terms, in the, uh, the form of city-owned garages of on-street metered spaces. That there is sufficient parking to meet small-scale developments in the, on Main Street. And we want to make it as a city easy as possible for people to invest money into these underutilized buildings and to redevelop them. To get people to living downtown, coming and going, that will help support businesses downtown. And that's really what we want for a goal as, as, as a city. So we don't want to do anything that's restrictive to make this harder to happen. Um, so that, that was my comment on that particular item. I do have another comment on the parking requirement listed in the table for multi-family, uh, development.
Uh, I, I just asked that you hold that briefly while I check in with councillor Boishman, see if you're.
That's fine.
Uh, councillor, did that answer your questions about our main street parking edits?
Well, uh, yeah, or no. Um, the only thing I have, I have a problem with, uh. What I noticed, what I noticed, and what people were complaining about. I don't know if it has anything to do with it. We have a, a place on Pritchard Street where they can buy tickets to buy for parking. And they get to park in the garage or they get to park on the street. So if they park on the street and you're a small businessman, what happens then? If everybody on your, on that residential is packing on it in front of his building with the special permit from the city. Uh, and that does happen because it happened on, uh, Pritchard Street, right across the street from the, that high-rise, I forget the name of it. Uh, the, the cars were parked there all the time and it, and it, what little businesses are in that district. They couldn't get customers to come in, you know, they had to park away and walk to their business. That's the only thing my concern about. And I feel differently, and I understand what you're saying councillor. Like, I agree with you, but I, to this day, I remember the woman on Cedar Street that bought the house. I told Tom about that story. And we told her, no, you can't, you can't rent out the second floor, you can't rent out the third floor because you don't have enough parking. And so you get a, you're stuck with that one unit, but an empty second floor and an empty third floor. Because you didn't have enough adequate parking. And, and I just feel entirely different and I told Tom that. You know?
So councillor, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
So, uh, one item, um, that we did pass, uh, the, the council did just pass in the RC section, just to go there briefly. Um, one of the other changes here was to amend the section of off-street parking by inserting the following section. In the RC district, which is the Cedar Street neighborhood you just outlined, which is Lower Claygorn. Um, the off-street parking requirements may be satisfied if the property is within an on-street residential parking permit district established by the city. Or if the property is within eight hundred feet of municipal off-street parking. That second part, the or is already existing. Um, but we added this clause because in the event that the city wanted to pursue on-street resident parking permit districts. Above and beyond the one that we have in a very small neighborhood in the College neighborhood. This would clarify in our ordinance that that would work, so those property owners wouldn't have to. Have properties sit fallow for the only reason being they don't have parking. Um, and I am certainly supportive of that and I think we've. Encountered too many of those problem properties that just don't have parking and there's nothing we're ever going to be able to do about that. Um, so I take your point and I think it's a good one.
Thank you. I'd also just like to comment briefly that. We are trying to tailor these parking exemptions to areas where there is alternative parking available somewhere. Because the problem with some of the people who get denied for lack of parking. Is that there simply isn't alternative parking on or off-street. It's a situation where if we were to allow someone to put a three-family house with one parking spot. What would actually happen is that the street would be clogged with on-street parking to the point where vehicles cannot pass. Uh, which creates a fire hazard, uh. Which creates a fire hazard, uh. You know, a hazard for ambulances and so forth. In addition to a great inconvenience for. Fitchburg residents driving through the neighborhood. So we're trying to allow for a relaxed parking standards. Where it is feasible. Uh, but you will still see some some residents who will. Be frustrated because they. Want to have more units than they have the parking for. In a city like Fitchburg, it simply isn't feasible to just. You know. Take off all the restrictions and allow people to have as as much or as little parking. As they desire. That said. I believe I had promised Counselor Van Hazinga I would come back to him, and then I have Counselor Squalia.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. The other comment was in the table for multifamily development. If we notice there is a struck out portion of the parking requirement that reads, uh, one space for each one-bedroom development, one and a half for each two-bedroom and so on. In bundle three that we will hear in a future date. The multifamily development section of the ordinance was edited to adopt this standard. Across all zones in the city. So it would make sense that that. That, um, section of the zoning ordinance is consistent with the parking table, so I would move to. Edit that to, uh, reinstate that crossed out section there. To be consistent with what was adopted by the two committees, uh, in the specific.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and seconds to. Revert back from the new language to parking spaces for each dwelling unit, whereas otherwise provided. To the previous language outlining different parking requirements depending on. Uh, types of units. If there is.
I get on the mo.
On the motion, Counselor Boishman, you just muted yourself. That wasn't me. I promise.
I'm having a hard time to understand what I. I I understand what Counselor Ant, uh, doesn't, I cut the word for Counselor says. I was thinking about this. I agree. Somewhat on the issues like. If I own a big house and I want to make pocket. And I start now. Then any new park, any, if I make an apartment house. Then I should be right now, this present time. Because I'm making a new apartment house, I should be required to have two parking spaces per unit. If you, I'm all in favor of that, if I start now. But the pre-existing ones that are already here. That was my concern. Anything that if I take a big house like I have right now, I say I want to make a a second floor and have a. A single, a two, a two-family out of my house. Then I should be required by law to say. Yes, you gotta have two parking spaces, I'm all in favor of that. Because I'm starting and I'm making a new unit. To put, uh, to make another family to come in, I agree with that. They had the two family then, the two parking spaces. And and that's all I wanted to say when it came to that, when I was thinking about, maybe I'm not explaining right, I'll have to talk to Tom. Maybe tomorrow about it. And explain it better. Because I don't want to waste all our time. But that was the only thing I was concerned about, to be honest with you, is the parking situations. And I talked to Tom numerous times about that. Him and I, and I read a lot of the articles he sent me. So, all right.
The R C districts are the old districts you're talking about, these are. These were built to house industrial workers in the mills. A long time ago before we had cars, and I think we need to have zoning that works for those. Neighborhoods frankly. And we're trying to sort of. Draw the fine line here between allowing it where it's possible.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony has stepped away for just a second. Did we, we had a motion and a and a second? On to revert back to the original language, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, go ahead, counselor.
Just wanted to do to clarify that the zoning ordinance, these restrictions and requirements only apply to new development. That, um. Counselor Boishman had raised the concern about. The requirement for existing uses. And that's not the case, any existing use is considered pre-existing, non-conforming, if it doesn't conform, and it is allowed to continue. So these restrictions do not change what anybody has to do who already has a two or three bedroom. Or three-unit apartment building. This is only if someone wants to develop a new property. Or possibly reinstate and abandon use, but there are other sections of the zoning ordinance which do provide some relief in that respect. So this is really just to govern the development of new properties.
Thank you for that clarification, and I see that Counselor. Zarella has returned, so I'm going to turn it back over to him.
Thank you, Vice President Walsh. I see I have Counselor Schultz, I have lost the remainder of the chat string, did we get, uh, Counselor Squalia?
Uh, no, I, uh, I'd like to speak after this motion.
Okay, uh, Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I I had a question for Counselor Van Hazinga and his, uh, his clarification. Now, for for existing properties. What what is the requirement if, uh? If, uh. A, uh, property that had, you know, had a relaxed parking situation. Becomes vacant for a period of time. Are they then, uh? Then they have to provide the the two parking spaces per unit, or is that, uh, is there a certain length of time that it has to be vacant and? I know that there's there's something to that, to that, I just was wondering if if you could clarify that for me.
If you don't mind, counselor, I'll actually field that one because, uh. That's that's zoning board territory, and I've done probably six or seven dozen of those over the years. There is, it, there are two conditions under which a property loses grandfather status.
Okay.
One is if it is abandoned, which can happen instantaneously, but has to be intentional. It means pretty much what you would think it means, if someone just walks away from their property, ceases maintaining it. Or does, uh. You know, does a walk away on their mortgage or something. Then it becomes abandoned. The other is if it is vacant or unused for two years or more.
Okay, yeah.
Which does not require an intentional abandonment, but does have the two-year limitation. Um, if either of those things happen. Then the property would need to come into full compliance with the zone, with the existing zoning code. Unless the zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, grants a special permit. Uh, which we call a reinstatement, that term isn't actually in the ordinance, but it's what we've always called it. To restore the grandfather status. As it previously existed, and Counselor Van Hazinga?
Just to further clarify that the, um, zoning ordinance was previously amended to allow for. A more streamlined reinstatement process, because this was something that was clogging up the Board of Appeals. After the foreclosure crisis, when there was a a great number of abandoned properties. In that, um, I believe it's two or three unit building, up to two or three units. Can apply for reinstatements directly through the Building Commissioner. If there's substantial investment in the property. In in those circumstances, the present parking, um. Nonconformity would be allowed to continue if it was not made any worse. So that if you had, say, a three-unit building with. Two parking spaces. You would be allowed to. Reinstate what was there before, but you could not take any parking spaces away and make it worse.
Thank you for that clarification.
Does that answer your question, Counselor?
It does, thank you.
All right, and, uh. I know when I asked Counselor Squalia, she mentioned after this motion, uh, Vice President Walsh, what motion do we have for us at the moment?
I believe the motion that was, uh, available is, I mean, or that we're considering right now is the motion to retain. To go back to the original language in.
Oh, yes, I apologize, I did actually take that one before I went away. Had a computer glitch, I apologize, uh. So we have the motion to. Restore the langu, the previous language regarding the variable parking requirement for multifamily housing. If no one else has anything on this motion. And if there is no objection. Seeing none, it is the sense of the council that it should be done. And Counselor Squalia, I have you in the queue. You have a floor.
Thank you, I just have one comment slash question, and that's, um. Multifamily development is, uh, stricken, but I believe. We changed it to be not multifamily housing, we changed it to be multifamily development?
That is actually, that is a change that came up in bundle three. Which what, which has gone through committee but has not been considered by the full council yet. It will be considered at, uh, our next meeting.
And that change will be reflected. When that vote's taken.
Okay.
Good catch, though. All right, uh, it was that, that was the only item?
There was, there was the matter of Academy Street versus Mechanic Street.
Ah, yes.
So again, there'd be an asterisk statement here in the table. And then to go down here, it would say. Exactly. Here we go. Residential developments with frontage on Main Street between its intersections at Day and Mechanic. With six or fewer residential units are not required to provide off-street parking. So it's either a matter of. Um, Academy Street. Or Mechanic.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Uh, which one, Counselor Schultz?
Uh, to accept the extension from Academy Street to Mechanic Street.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion. If there is no objection. And by unanimous consent, is the sense of the council that it should be done. And can I get a motion on the full? Uh, section?
Don't move.
Full section.
I have a motion and second, uh. If there is no objection. Then it is the sense of the council that this section should be adopted. Now, if all have been heard on this matter, then I would like to entertain a motion to continue the hearing to March sixteenth. For consideration of bundle three and a final vote. I have a motion and second. If there is no objection. Then by unanimous consent, the hearing is continued. All right. Moving on, we have. Orders Finance, uh, we have a second vote. On zero sixteen twenty-one, a loan order for. Four million five hundred thousand dollars to pay the costs of the city's data upgrade and Fallula Transmission, uh, main water projects. As outlined in the enclosed loan order, this is its final reading.
Move to send sixteen twenty-one to its final reading.
I have a motion and second, uh, Madam Clerk, this, would you please conduct a roll call vote, this must pass by a two-thirds vote.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Move thirty-one through. Forty twenty-one be sent to Finance, holding out. Thirty-six twenty-one.
We actually do not need a motion for that, that will be automatic, uh, but I will take that as a motion for suspension of the rules on. Thirty-six twenty-one.
Yes.
Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll? Uh, roll call, this also requires a two-thirds vote.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, we have zero thirty-six twenty-one ordered that there be hereby is appropriated. The sum of eighty thousand dollars seem to be charged against available funds and credited to law other expenses, litigation as special counsel. Given the sensitive nature of this. Matter pertaining to ongoing litigation, I am going to request from the council that this be addressed without debate.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If, uh, and this, I will, uh, because of the nature of the item, I will ask a roll call vote.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Move a question?
Oh, uh, we, we just.
Can we do, oh.
We just took it.
I'm sorry.
Quite all right, my fault, I I had, uh. Mentioned that at a different time, um. So, moving on, we have ordinances zero twenty-six twenty-one through zero thirty twenty-one, all of which are in their final reading. Uh, I would ask unanimous consent to waive the reading of the text. Um, but I believe we will need a roll call vote for each of the ordinances. Seeing no objection, we will waive the reading of the text, zero twenty-six twenty-one is before the council for a final reading. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I will take that as a motion, uh, for it to be enrolled, ordained and advertised. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, zero twenty-seven twenty-one is before the council.
Stand to a final reading.
Enrolled, ordained and advertised.
I have a motion and second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia. Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, zero twenty-eight twenty-one is before the council.
It's final reading, enrolled, ordained and advertised. Second.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, zero twenty-nine twenty-one is before the council.
Move to its, send it to its final reading.
I have a motion and second, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, zero thirty twenty-one is before the council.
Move to send it to its final reading, enrolled, ordained and advertised. Second.
I have a motion and second, Madam Clerk?
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Dean Italian.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, and we have two petitions which will be sent to the Public Safety Committee, zero forty-one twenty-one, Sergeant Daniel Boudreaux to install a stop sign. On the east side of Stony Brook Road at the intersection with Village Crossing where the divided entrance to Stony Brook meets Village Crossing. And zero forty-two twenty-one, Counselor Marissa Fleming to review the no parking restrictions on Eastland Way. To determine whether or not the restrictions should be expanded to include no parking on both sides of a portion of Eastland Way. Both of those are referred to the Public Safety Committee. At this time, I would like to ask that we observe a moment of silence. Uh, for the recent passing of former City Councilor Dave Clark. Uh, who passed away this past week. Um. I only had the privilege of serving on the council with Counselor Clark for one term. But in that time, I. Knew him to be unfailingly warm, polite and dedicated to public service in every way. Um, so I would ask that we now observe a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Our thoughts go out, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and he will be greatly missed by the people of this city. That, and I also have one further announcement, uh. From Counselor Kucher. The British American Club will be, I'm sorry, uh, the British American Club will be. Conducting a corned beef dinner on Sunday, March fourteenth from one PM to four PM. Uh, it is open to the public, tickets on sale now at the club or from a member for ten dollars, to-go orders only. Uh, I know the club has been having a bit of a rough time with the closings and so forth, so. You know, please support local businesses. And that concludes our agenda for this evening. I have a unanimous motion to adjourn. So we will, we are therefore adjourned. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.